All right, Keith, it's you got the floor.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, so hey, you know, when I came on a few years ago, there was a lot of frustration. There was a lot of a lot of people up in arms because there were meetings held with aldermen from a meeting helped there were meetings held about activity in Ward one with aldermen from a different I'll just say different war not going to point fingers saying but so at the time there was a general consensus from a lot of the board members that I talked to at the time that that was practice really wasn't fair it wasn't and it wasn't fair because people that voted those aldermen in were not in that ward so therefore they they were kind of getting involved in things or they had no recourse from the vote. And so that and that's kind of the way as an alderman you're elected to represent the people. That's and that's that's I believe actually if you go to the city website, that's what it says. Alderman elected to represent the people and you're that's why I put if it's you know, the property is part of that if it's in that ward, the people are impacted by that property too. So that's kind of why I incorporated that in there. And I'm not saying that the wording or anything I used is way it should go forward. I just want to have a discussion about this because I feel that you know, there's certain maybe a protocol might help because this has been an issue before. And then, of course, in the last meeting, I kind of took issue with it and I made that known. And I think that that's something that I'd like to not see happen again. I'd like to be able to prevent it by establishing a policy or procedure revision to the code that governs how an RBA works for the city. So that's kind of how I wanted to tee it up, but I also wanted to also give a positive note for this too. I think that we've come a long way in the city as well. I'd like to give kudos to the mayor and the city administrator. I talked to the two aldermen from Ward one recently and they were very happy to be included in an early meeting with some folks that were interested in make some potential development activities. So they were looped in from the beginning, and I think that's the right way forward. And I think that as as the board, we should also have a similar approach to it as well. You know, that this administration has kind of taken that step in the right direction, and I think that the board should as well. So I open it up for discussion.
I agree 100% of what Keith was saying, and I think there is, if you talk to residents, they want transparency. And they also want to collaborate. And generally speaking, somebody that's reaching out to me is going to be a Ward one resident. So it only makes sense that you are included in those discussions. So going forward, there's nobody likes surprises. And so I think it's it's a great idea to be able to work as a team. Ryan and I, like I said, we just did a it was excellent, and I think it was very, very beneficial. And I think the people that we met appreciated that they were doing kind of proposing something award one and they were talking to Ward one.
No, just just understanding. Now, I don't disagree, but I wanted to say, is there are we putting this in like a stature where we have to go by these bylaws? Or is this like from here on out, we do this like our pre like when I was first alderman, I went through a session. Are are like welcome session which is practices, which one are you looking to do? Because I don't mind. Practices, I think that's a good thing. But I don't know, does it have to be like a a rule? That's my question.
Well, yeah, it could. Well, honestly, I defer to the board. This is something I want to recommend, but I'm not prescribing the solution. I'm merely proposing, you know, move in this direction. I think that, you know, the my proposal, obviously, is a consideration to revise the code. And right now, the code gives specific criteria for the RBA to actually hit agenda. Once it hits the agenda, you know, it's it goes public. So the point is, is if it's the agenda and got two aldermen in the ward that aren't aware of it, that puts them in a difficult imposition with their residents. And then that kind of creates the problems that we've had in the past. So I was put that way. So I think with this, you know, there's a couple ways we can go. We can, you know, we can look to a couple different alternatives to the city attorney to sort of maybe pull together some verbiage up like we've done before when we changed the code, just like hopefully does fireworks, but you know, still, you know, something to yeah, that's most of my but I think that, you know, we come through and then we kind of have some options and then we or discuss it. You know, something that it's again, not prescribing, but looking for boards input as well as thoughts on this way forward. I think that putting it into a code would be good. Since the code already exists. And there are already rules that outline why or how an RBA is submitted. I think that's for these similar reasons. This just helps put a little more structure in it. Helps keep things organized and collaborative. And does that make sense? Like that's if you just put like a resolution, people don't need to follow it. So but if it is so city administrator not gonna put it on the agenda if there's not somebody from a specific ward on there and it meets that criteria. But if you don't change the code, my understanding is that makes sense.
So my understanding is the RBA is come to the work session first, right? Okay, which all issues that have happened in the past always came to the work session first. Board was ever put on agenda because then it has to be voted to put on the agenda for the next meeting. So I don't understand why anybody couldn't bring something. And I'm just thinking in general, and I'm trying to think of everything, or just say something that would affect the whole city. Then how do you go about doing that? You're not going to get everybody signing on that. You know, and you bring forth this proposal, okay? And yet you have not called me, Keith, and talked to me once about it, and I'm in your ward. So I miss your point here.
Well, there's also another thing that's going on right now, but I will talk. So, yes, that's why I put specific verbiage in there. If it impacts people or property in a specific board, at least one alderman is notified. I don't I didn't put in there that if something affects the whole city.
I'm I and I guess my point is, if you're talking about something like that, then both aldermen should sign off on it. I mean, any any issue that you had going on in your ward, if you're that adamant about it, don't you think both aldermen should sign off on something? I don't.
It's a member of the board.
And and that being to the point where I'm getting you're getting awful specific when you would get into these code sections and you're outlining all these things. There's, you know, understanding that. And of course, it's not always done. I understand that. But but everything that I've been to this board has been brought to the work session first, then announced, discussed, and brought forward. I don't know where you would need a code to put this in.
It's a great I'm glad you brought that up because it brings me to another point of something that that I recommended we change when I first came on here, and we did subsequently did change. We initially had two readings, just about everything on the agenda. So that means that you came and then but we changed that because we're trying to slow the process down. Give the board a time to make decisions. That's that's kind of part of this. Slows the process down. So in the, you know, that was what about a year and a half ago? We changed it to do to change the standard to two readings. That way it's spread it out over more meetings. And this is in the same vein, this is also helping give aldermen more time to make decisions. And in this case, engage with their constituents and make decisions should should something like that happen. So again, like this is I don't see how, oh, having two aldermen on there, if you think that that's right approach, then I just put one to put it as a maybe a more milder threshold in the as we move in that direction. But I would also like to ask, how long ago was it where we required aldermen's signatures on an RBA? This is this is a legitimate question. What point did we is at one point, wasn't there only one signature required?
Originally, there was only one.
Right.
Ward on there. I can't remember. It's been two years ago.
So so we're moving in the right direction, and I think that this is so we made a step in the right direction by requiring two aldermen be a signatory on something. Now, I think that this is an additional step in the right direction by ensuring that at least one of those signatories is from that ward. In the event that it's specifically impacts the residents or property that's specific to that ward, I don't think that's really reasonable. You know, and I don't want to I'm not trying to turn this into a debate. It's just this is just my perspective and what I feel is reasonable, and I've talked to a few other members that I that's my thought, Alderman Johnson and welcome additional thoughts on.
Well, I have a comment. I know if I was going to do some goes an RBA for Ward one, I would reach out to and unless Ryan's out of the country or something abnormal, then I would go to other I think ideally Ryan and I work really great together. Great that we both are kind of cohesive and we both are trying to be transparent over with residents. And I think that you don't necessarily have that same not again, you're not getting elected. I have somebody on Ward three or Ward two on my RBA. Again, they don't have the connection with the residents and they don't have they didn't elect them like they let. I think that's I think that's really important. And again, that my best practice would be to have the same person in the ward as the co-signer.
Okay, so my question is, is because I've seen it happen where aldermen in the same ward were opposed to something. So you have an RBA, one's in favor, one's not with and you would pretty much have to go to another alderman.
That's why I really kind of thought one would make sense. I don't want to disagree with Johnson. It's like that too, but that's getting kind of the reason why I thought one would make sense. Not always going to happen.
That wasn't my proposal to have to. That was just asking a question.
Okay.
I was I was only asking, you know, would you why you only have one? That's all I was asking.
So I agree with you, Mayor. I think that it makes sense to have one. Feel that it's sort of balanced that we could try by changing that city code section at a little more nuanced. You already changed this recently. Step in the right direction to make now it's just somebody is representative of that ward and elected by those people. Involved in the process. I don't think that there's necessarily anything that's been I'll just leave it at that. I think that that would make more sense. Frustration. I guess to the board, is anybody else having?
Yeah, I do. I I think that if I were proposing something for Ward three or Ward one, I certainly would go to the alderman in that ward and either get both of their signatures or get one of their signatures. And if I couldn't, I would figure out, well, why are they not agreeing with me and have a big discussion about that? But I just don't think as board members that we should put anything forward for another ward that we don't have their one of their signatures on at least on the proposal because otherwise, I just think it creates issues. It has created issues. And I don't think that's what this particular board is wanting to do anymore. I think we all want to work together and certainly do the best things we can for each ward. But I don't think it's right for somebody to put something on as an RBA that is not for the ward that they're in unless they have someone in that ward's signature on it.
Like I said, I'm not against it. I just it's just that everything is brought the work session first and then move forward. So
I don't think that's necessarily the case. It is not always it is brought to the work session, yes. But there are other things and discussions had that are not brought to the work session for all of us to know about it first. And then it the RBA was done. RBAs are done, and then things are brought to the work session, and that's where people find out about them. And I don't think that's right. I think everybody should have to work together, and I think the people who is ward it belongs to should be on that RBA. If it's that important to bring it to the work session on an RBA, then they should be certainly supportive of it.
The problem we're getting into is if it's not at a meeting, you're you're discussing the same issue with more than aldermen, then you have a quorum in relation to the outside of a meeting, discuss anything same topic for aldermen. Is that not correct?
I'm not sure. I'm not. I'm not sure how this intersects with that.
Oh, but what you were far as things before it comes to the board? No, as far as like a lot of things before they come to the board, go work session?
Okay, I can do you have enough information or kind of got a consensus to move forward with something proposed? Does the board want to move forward with this, I guess?
Yes.
But I suggest an actual formal motion though.
Okay.
Sorry, I'd like to make a motion to track the city attorney to revise B two in the city code section 110.195 to reflect RBA and the question around that for an option. Start with establishing a protocol for a board member. Sorry, kids. Board member is informed if it impacts. I think that the RBA has
Is there a second?
A second.
Second, all in favor? Yeah.
Well, if I could ask the clarification of the motion makers and the intent of this, we would prepare
Propose options.
Options to be to come back to a work session.
Yes. I don't think there's any directions.
I don't think we have the vote on yet. Second?
I did.
Our second, I did.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Hey, here none. The motion carries. Okay, next item, options for expanding the police services. I think there's four different options.
Yes.
Go ahead, Kathy. It's
Captain Hunt asked that we table this discussion to the January 22 meeting. He's still preparing the data that
Okay. Alright, so I entertain a motion to table the options for
I moved.
Okay, second by Mark. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Here none. The services is tabled until next meeting. All right. Review of the Board of Aldermen agenda. To the meeting, has everybody got any questions, comments, or concerns to discuss right now? All right. They have communication. City Attorney. The engineer. Okay, it's obvious something needs to be done. I guess my first question is, is I don't understand why that wasn't in the grant as far as like the the work needed to I mean, if 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 yeah. All right, well, we I mean, it's it's pretty obvious, and I I'm pretty sure the board is in agreement that in order to do this project, that has to be repaired. So, I mean, let's just move forward with, you know, you asking for more money. Exactly, yeah.
There the there areas where this that bridge is pretty old. Are there any other areas I think missing as well? Any other bridges in the city?
That's for that's for another day.
Yeah, I guess.
For another day, this is just close road here. So
I guess my question is, on the beams that are deteriorated already, how long would the other beams last if we don't replace them? So
There's different requirements and yeah, well, oh, the other ones that are there.
Yes, that are that are already there. I mean, I right, that's
Yeah.
Right.
To the mayor's point, maybe this conversation about other bridges and safety. Hey, but I made a request from Mayor sort of Day, but I made a request from Mayor, uh, sort of kind of a offline. Um, but what kind of programs do we have to inspect and see? I just didn't, this has been. Throwing under there and we find it because we're going to fix this with the grant. What other issues might we not be looking at because we're not trying to fix the overall road? That's what I'm getting at. So if I could request that, uh, or be updated with. But what does the city, how to inspect these box pulvers and bridges? Hey, that's, that's a concern that I have with this. If this slipped under our radar. Tom didn't try to put a grant in, that certain road again, that would be an issue. That'd be an issue that how long would it have gone through? But that's, that's the point I'm trying to make.
And, and point well taken, and their bridges are required to be inspected regularly. Oh, I mean. No, it's obvious, yeah, so. Yeah, so, I mean, we need to look and make sure that, again. I know the bridge that, that they put across Henning Road there, across the creek, I know it's been inspected at least two times. So, yeah, but that's a good point. We can look at what bridges we have and see if there's any other that have been, you know, that's not on our list. Okay. Well, that's, that's Jeff, that's a, another topic. We'll, we'll get there, okay? Alright. Yeah. Right. Okay. Uh, the administrator, Kathy, are you finished? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a couple of items on the agenda I did want to bring to the board's attention. The, uh, new business item one on your agenda is an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the professional service agreement with H R Green in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars for the completion of the construction and inspection services related to Stump Road project. H R Green submitted a request in the original amount of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars to continue having an H R Green inspector onsite for thirty hours per week for the rest of the project, which is now anticipated to be completed by the end of March. Um, they cited that unexpected utility issues and delays extended the construction schedule by these three months from what they had anticipated and budgeted for, and they requested additional compensation. After consideration of this request, our public work supervisor, Phil Toll, and I discussed this and, um, he agreed that we could supplement H R Green services with his inspection services. Um, he's qualified to perform the work necessary, and fortunately, at this particular time period, he can redirect his time. So we're proposing that fifteen hours a week or so of Phil's time and fifteen hours of H R Green. Um, that's how we were able to reduce that change order request significantly. The total authorized compensation to H R Green for construction and inspection services would be increased to a total of two hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars with the total cost to the city for construction inspection services totaling thirty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Just to refresh the board and the public, this, this project is about eighty-five percent funded by East West Gateway and the Saint Charles County Road Board. And this supplemental agreement for seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-dollar, fifty-one dollars would be solely funded by the city of Darton Prairie with no reimbursement, um, through the grant for that. Business item number three on your agenda this evening. At the last meeting of the Board of Aldermen, John Young noticed that there was an error in bill number twenty-four sixty-two. The ordinance approving a C-three P U D for the property where Mercy is planning to operate a health clinic. Section four oh five point one nine five D of city code provides that uses permitted on any property with a C-three retail commercial district planned urban development designation is limited to those uses expressly authorized in the ordinance that approve the area plan, and any use not expressly permitted in such ordinance is prohibited. Though in bill number twenty-four sixty-two, City Attorney Young noted there are no uses specifically authorized, so the ordinance would not accomplish, um, the request by Mercy. John provided an amendment ordinance with a new subsection two that addresses the use requested and specifically adds all permitted uses in the C-three retail commercial district. This is to avoid requiring an amended P U, P U D for all permitted uses on the site. The amended language is, the following uses are hereby permitted on the property subject to their compliance with the area plan. One, health service providers, healthcare providers, health and wellness services, medical services, medical offices, clinics and laboratories, and hospitals not less than five acres, and all uses that are listed as permitted in the C-three retail commercial district as provided in sections four oh five, that one nine five B of the municipal code as amended. As I mentioned, this is item number three under new business. Um, that, that ordinance includes the new language, but an amendment will be required by the board to incorporate that language officially since there was a first reading on this.
So we can amend it and then still read it, right?
Read it as amended. Right.
Wouldn't know, we'd have to vote on the amendment first and then read.
Then read it.
Okay.
And then under just miscellaneous updates I have for the board, um, hate to mention this word, but snow. Um, Amy and I have fielded probably a hundred calls or emails. I'm sure you guys all have fielded calls and emails as well. Um, I do want to give credit to Amy who managed the bulk of the angry calls with poison professionalism. I personally witnessed her, um, uh, asking a gentleman to please not yell at her and use obscene language when he was speaking to her. Um, she did a remarkable job with that. I just really appreciate, like I said, the poison professionalism she, she had during this uh, Snowmageddon event. Um, I know that people are upset. I don't know that they really understand the significance of this event, um, with both ice and snow over an extended period of time. And I would also like to recognize the county who we rely on at this point for their services, their crews and the challenging work and long hours that were put into the effort. I think they're still out there um, trying to finish up with cul-de-sacs and courts, which are always the last. And unfortunately, they're coming through and making additional swipes, which is now just putting more snow in front of people's driveways that they've already plowed. So I know you all are hearing it. Um, I just want to give you a sense of what we've experienced on the staff side with maybe a hundred calls related to that.
Okay, I'd like to add that, uh, there were several calls that I got, emails, and, uh, John Bryshu I reached out to because he, he was, I know, I know him personally and he's no longer in Road Division, Road Division, which is what's in, voted. But he took charge of a few things, and I mean, just in a matter of hours, they found. Couple of them was not. I mean, it, it was amazing.
I agree. I had the same experience with John. He, um, I had emailed him earlier in the day. He emailed me, I think, at eight o'clock at night to respond, had his staff respond to me. They've been very responsive when I, when I act with them and trying to resolve these issues.
Can imagine. Without him.
It's, it, yep. Little daunting. I will say that, you know, I drive from University City and it's not any better over there. So, um, you know, it was just a big event, tough to manage. Couple of city events, I just wanted to just alert the board that we are in the planning stages for the annual HOA dinner. We're looking at Thursday, May first as a date for that. Um, if you guys could check your calendars, make sure that would work for you all. Um, we're in the process of updating our current HOA representative listings, so if you have any HOA contacts that maybe knew, if you could forward that information to Amy, that would be really helpful in her trying to put together and finalize those, those listings. Um, we're also in the initial stages of planning for the annual Easter egg hunt. It will be Saturday, April nineteenth. That's the Saturday before Easter Sunday. And we are, um, going to include the inclusive egg hunt, which I understand, uh, was, uh, the first, um, event was last year and it was very well received. It sounds like it's a really neat event, so. I just wanted to share that with the board.
Hey, uh, thank you Kathy. Alderman?
I have something.
Okay.
Um, I know we would talk just briefly. I was just wondering if. Flushed out. Lighting off fireworks on news at at midnight. I, I fell asleep and woke up to my panicked rescue dogs that were in distress and I had to go downstairs basement with them after down there, twelve twenty or something. I don't know why. I mean, I, I get it, light off a few fireworks to celebrate, but as cold as it was too, I'm just surprised that there was that level of activity, and I just wanted to find out if any other areas, if you guys noticed it or not. I mean, lighting off stuff at midnight, what if I had a baby or what if I had silver or something? Because it was, I think what was distressed my dog so bad is that it was just so quiet and then boom, as opposed to, they do get distressed on during Fourth of July, but you can hear the fireworks going off throughout, you know, the day, so to speak, but I, I just wanted to ask that question.
Looking at the. Right now, it's fireworks season. Generally, charge. I, I, if I recall, we did discuss it, uh, for New Year's, but. And added in there, but I, I think there are, there are, uh, permissible, it's surrounding cities. So I think that there would have been under. Happened with us, but other cities and unincorporated Saint Charles County. Others may.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to say. I had quite a few, but mine all came from, uh, the trailer park that's in Saint Charles County Incorporated, which borders us. And, uh, yeah, they went, they went off quite a long.
I thought that was you, Alderman.
Well, they, they did a lot more than mine. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, there was quite a bit over in Ward Three, I'll say that. I agree.
We had thirty-five minutes of it in my, my area.
That just seems kind of excessive. It's like the middle of the night.
Okay. Anybody else? Hey, I got, uh, just one thing I want to, uh, bring up, the, uh, every year the mayors of Saint Charles County have a, uh, a charity ball, and that's going to be March fifteenth this year, and, uh, we go out and solicit, uh, businesses to donate things. It's, uh, you know, for the auction and, uh, to sponsorship. Event. Tim Weber is one of our top sponsors. They've been sponsoring every year. Uh, they ask each city, the aldermen, to go out to people you know and sell some kind of gift basket or something that, uh, we can auction off. Uh, tickets are two dollars. Person. Typically sell out. The theme this year is Ireland. Uh, Mayor Borgmeyer, he was, he's able to get, uh, round trip tickets, uh, trip to Ireland. So that will be, uh, the top item to auction off. And, uh, I was able to, uh, uh, get Irish green set of luggage. Uh, I went ahead and ordered it, got it probably a couple of months ago after everything was decided which way we were going. Anybody wants to help contribute for that cost, that was about three hundred dollars, little over three hundred. Sided three-piece set. Uh, and then if you know anybody, if you're, if you have contacts, typically we go out to, uh, businesses and uh, developers, contractors for contributions. And you're warned, if you know of businesses and you're, you're out, just casually, you know, ask them if they got something they would like to contribute. Different things we put together into baskets. Auction. Anyway. I think that's all I have. Go ahead.
Um, I know that we have, can everybody hear me? Another, we have new subdivisions, um, within our Darting Prairie, and, uh, I know our subdivision is not owned, and I, uh, viewed dedicated to the city yet. Um, I don't know what we can do, but I'm not asking the city to do anything, but is there something we can do to say, okay, we, we're not going to plow, but we can like, talk to your developer about the snow that has not been removed. Is there something that we can do on that note? Not necessarily.
You, do you still have snow that hasn't been?
We have tons of snow.
Okay, I will call in the morning. I will talk to, uh, Jim Brennan and ask him what's going on here because he's well aware of his responsibilities, and he's usually pretty good at handling this. I mean, uh, I, I, I will call him first thing in.
No problem. I, I know, like I said, we talked the day, the day of snow, we, we talked about it already, totally understand, but I'm also concerned about the new, newer residents that we just have all also. So, um, the Darting other ones, I just want to make sure everybody's okay, and that, and everybody knows where to go sometimes, so I just wanted to put that out there. That's all. I'm not saying you need to do everything, Mayor, I'm just saying.
Oh, I do what I can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, I know we had several, a couple residents that were pretty hot under the collar that lived in, uh, these, these developments that they're still building and the city and the streets are not dedicated to the city and and, and know that they're responsible. Okay. Alright. Hey, uh, time, uh, any motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the work session is adjourned. We'll be back at, uh, seven promptly for the regular meeting.